Hi.
Hi, how are you doing?
I'm doing well. I am so glad to be here with you on the Asheville View. Today, we have Rich Lee, who is running for city council, and we're just gonna have a conversation about what's important to him, about the issues that are important to us, and just see where he stands on all these wonderful things. So, how've you been doing?
I'm good. I'm holding up, you know? It feels like the 10th month of being shut down and locked inside, but, you know, we're doing alright.
So, I wanted to ask, how did you fall in love with Asheville? How did you get here? How long have you been here?
Oh, yeah. So, I've been up here since, mostly since 1997. So, I came up here as a new college freshman because it was the farthest school I could get into in-state away from where my parents live in Charlotte. And so, I met a girl from here, married her, we had kids. I moved away for a little bit because I was in the Peace Corps. So, I lived in the desert in the Kingdom of Jordan for about two years.
Wow.
And I lived for about six months in Alaska after that, just to change my scenery. But this was, that whole time, this was home. And I remember, we had this book of like postcards, like you would get at mass stores or something like that, of scenes of the Blue Ridge Parkway. And when it was 110 degrees in the desert and everything was brown and dry, we would just sit and flip through these pictures of the Blue Ridge Parkway and just bawl and just cry and cry. So, this has been home for more than half my life now.
Wow. That's an amazing story. And how did you get into? So, tell me about what you do now and how you got into politics.
So, where I'm sitting now, this is my office. I'm a financial advisor, so I help people pick investments for retirement accounts and such. And I can't go into too much detail about this because when I talked about it last campaign, my compliance people from my company went and watched all my old videos, and they came with a list of things that I said that I wasn't supposed to say because of the regulations. But I help people make investment decisions for their own retirement or their kids' college accounts. So, I got into politics in a really small way that just seemed to get bigger and bigger. Years ago, I lived in West Asheville, and our neighborhood organized a neighborhood association to try to get the city to do something about like streets and sidewalks and get it to pay attention to our area and do some small things. And I ended up being the person who dealt with the city the most on that. And I had some successes and got the city to pay for and do the things that we wanted them to do. And that just ballooned out. And eventually, I got on some committees and commissions with the city, like helping to make decisions from their side of things. And it's just kept growing and getting bigger and bigger until, most recently, I was the head of the city's transportation commission, which is planning sidewalks and like what roads get repaved and just everything. And the transit system, everything to do with transportation citywide. And I've been doing that for like two or three years.
And of all the things that you've done, what would you say, like, this is the most important work that I've done? Here's where I really hang my hat and say, like, I'm in it to win it. You can rely on me. Here's my record. Here's what I've done.
Okay. So, the thing that I like the best is, and this is probably gonna be really controversial, depending on who's listening to this, but I really like that I helped lead the city to start to pay for traffic calming, like those road humps, speed humps on city streets. They'd stopped for almost a decade and weren't doing it on any more streets. And there was a lot of, I don't know if you know this, Asheville is ranked the most dangerous city in North Carolina for people walking around and has the highest number of pedestrian injuries and fatalities per capita of any city in North Carolina. And there's an equity aspect to that, too, because black and brown people are disproportionately more likely to get hit by cars. So, I helped start a push for the city to start to do these projects again. And we had to basically reinvent it from scratch. By then, there was a 25-year waiting list or something for streets that needed them. And that was pretty cool. But probably the biggest thing and the one that is gonna make the biggest difference to the city 20 years from now is I just, this last couple of years, have been helping lead this major overhaul of the bus system to try to make it so buses are more like a real major modern city, where wherever you are, a bus comes by every 10 or 15 minutes, and you can just hop on it and go somewhere sensible. And so, we just, right before the shutdown, put the first steps of that in place. And the goal is, within a few years, wherever you are in a city, there's a bus 10 or 15 minutes away. And it'll feel like living in Chicago or DC or Charlotte or something and having a convenient bus system you could actually use instead of a car.
Yeah. You know, we talked earlier, and I lived in DC, and I definitely, I had a car, and my car was way more trouble than it was worth in DC.
Yeah, definitely.
Just because you walk everywhere.
Yeah. I mean, when I was in the Peace Corps, I rode the bus, and I didn't own a car while I lived abroad. I lived in Mexico, too, and didn't own a car. And the buses were so convenient that you sort of didn't want one, you know? Maybe if you wanted to get out of the city...
Well, it would take you longer to get there in a car than it would for us on a bus or on a train anyway, so...
Yeah. And so, Asheville's not there yet. There's still so many ways that where you work is too far, out of the way for your car, and there's not convenient shopping for a lot of places. My office is here on the South Side or right on the edge of the South Side neighborhood. There's not really a grocery store or something. So, if I tried to live in this neighborhood, even though it's almost right downtown, in a lot of ways, I'd still have to have a car to, or I'd really feel it. And the goal is to get to a point where people who choose not to have cars or people who choose a lifestyle that is more environmentally friendly, that's more urban and close to downtown, that they can have that without really costing themselves a lot in time and money.
Definitely. So, you have made it very clear to me, you had your number-one thing on your agenda, if you were voted for city council, would be?
Infrastructure. That's at the time I was saying that. We got a couple of other big things that have come since then.
Okay, like what?
Yes. Well, so, I have, I've been worried for a long time that the city was going to run into an economic crisis that would really hurt it because of the amount of jobs here that are dependent on tourism and that are what we call cyclical. And so, and now we've seen that. So, the shutdown has basically taken Asheville from having the lowest unemployment of any city in North Carolina to having the second-highest unemployment right now. And the biggest part of that is the drop in jobs in restaurants and hotels and downtown businesses. So, that shows to me a real need for Asheville to have a different kind of economy from what it's had, to have a more diversified economy that has jobs in technology and healthcare and manufacturing and other industries that are dependent on tourist dollars coming in. And it also shows that when, because of how Asheville has grown up as a tourist town, when something happens that shuts down travel and shuts down visitors and stores and such downtown, that it hurts across the board. And the city's lost millions and millions of dollars that they expected to be able to spend this year because stores aren't open, so they're not collecting sales taxes or people aren't staying in hotels or new businesses, you know? Businesses are closing down, so they're losing business licenses. And so, getting Asheville's economy more diversified is gonna be something that helps all of us. And it's also gonna make sure that Asheville's in a position where we're not looking at having to maybe cut the transit system because our dollars are all driven up.
How will we diversify? I feel like we're so steeped into tourism, like, how will we back out of that? Or do we back out of that? Or do we add an extra economy? Like, what ideas do you personally have?
So, that's a really good question. And it's one of the reasons that cities do really poorly trying to control their economies is because the kind of tools that we have are what would be the most satisfying to someone like you or me looking at you. I mean, why don't we just point at a lot here and say, hey, let's make this a factory instead of making, or let's make this like a Google headquarters instead of making a, instead of making that. Instead of a hotel, you know? We don't live in the Soviet Union, so we can't just point at something and direct the economy. And the way that cities try to deal with this in the past is they're trying to get somebody like BMW in South Carolina or, you know, some kind of big, major national or international corporation to decide to by basically putting money in the pockets of a corporation, saying, well, we'll cut your taxes or we won't charge you taxes for the next 20 years or 10 years if you decide to move here. And since every city in America is basically trying the same thing, it ends up being a really bad deal even for the people who get it. So, my, the way I look at it is Asheville does have a lot of really, we have a lot of really well-educated people. We have people that grew up here, that stay here because they love it and they love the area. But we also have people that have moved here because they're excited by the culture and by the mountains and scenery and the arts and everything. And so, we've got a pretty fairly educated base of workers here. It's just connecting them to jobs that are outside of tourism, that will give them careers that last their whole lives and really put them in the middle class.
I feel like we have a lot of low-wage jobs here, though. Like, I'm highly educated. I haven't found a job that was like, oh, like, this is gonna really help me retire. And, you know, I've experienced the wage gap here, so it's...
Yeah, same, same here. My first, after I got out of the, after I got out of the Peace Corps and came back here, I spent years working in retail and just hated it. You know, people would ask what I do for a living, and I'd just be like, yeah, I'm unemployed. You know, I'd rather tell somebody who's unemployed than tell somebody that worked at a store in the mall. And so, and there was nothing about it that was gonna, that was gonna help me get to a point like where I felt like I could own my house and raise my kids the way I wanted to and retire. And when I look at them, one of them wants to be a computer programmer, and one of them wants to be a veterinarian and, you know, scientist. And, you know, I don't wanna have to tell them that they have to leave this area to, and go to Charlotte or Raleigh or Greenville or Atlanta to find jobs in the careers that they wanna work, but it's almost that way now. So, one of the things that I look at that's really exciting about the area is we have a lot of people who are remote workers. So, maybe they work for an outside company, but they work from home or from a coffee shop online. And that's something that we've sort of, I've heard recently from somebody who works at AP Tech that we have more remote workers here already than Charlotte and more than, more per capita than San Francisco, which if you think about how many people work in tech and such in San Francisco, more people here already do their jobs from home. And, you know, over the last three or four months, everybody's been, that still has a job, has been doing their job from home, or a lot of people are. So, one of the ways that I think would be a cheap and really effective way to diversify the economy is to start to connect more people into those jobs. If I know somebody who works for Microsoft and they're a computer programmer and they live here because they like it, how do they make, how do they get their neighbors and other people here? Or how does the city have a policy that gets more people connected into those jobs? And does it look like certain kinds of education or training? Does it look like having municipal Wi-Fi so that everybody in the city has access to fast internet? You know, that's really important. And there's a lot of disparity between people that live in, like I say, public housing and don't have good dependable internet access. How do we get people into the job like that? I also think like small manufacturing, where you just work for a little place that's got four or five people, like this store up the street from me that makes guitar pedals that I just found out about. You know, doing something like that rather than paying hundreds of millions of dollars to try to get one factory to come locate here seems like a way that could spread jobs around more. And when you look at the who needs it, too, we have, we have a real split, I'm sure you're aware, in Asheville between white, highly-educated, white-collar workers who, you know, have low unemployment and do fairly well, and then the black population of Asheville or the younger population of Asheville that's just coming out of school into the recession, the public housing population of Asheville. So, even before the shutdown, black unemployment in Asheville was in the double digits.
Exactly.
White people in Asheville are just now beginning to experience, you know, in a small way, what the job situation was for black Asheville for a decade or more. And so, making sure that whatever we do for jobs isn't just making a nice job for somebody to move here from Raleigh and, you know, and walk into and making sure that those jobs actually go to people that already live here that have been working in low-wage jobs, that's a really important part of it.
Yeah. So, you've ran for city council more than once, right?
Yeah, this is my third time.
Okay. So, why do you keep losing? And what's different about this time?
So, the biggest part of running for city council is how to, in my experience, is how to reach so many people, just such a much bigger number of people than you could imagine. And I know you, you're an influencer, you're out there, you've got a lot of connections that you've built in the city. And I see how you use social media really effectively, and you get in front of a lot of people. But even still, you know, if you add up all the people you know and all the people they know here in the city, you may not be to 2,000 or 3,000 people. And to win a city council election, the first two times I ran, when they were held in off-years and the turnout was pretty low as part of the city, you still needed 8,000 or 9,000 people to know you to win. And it's just, it's just hard. So, and people in Asheville don't just wanna vote for somebody because they, you know, because they got a piece of mail from you or they saw an ad on Twitter for you. They want you to have, they want you to have gotten in front of them. I was working, or my wife was working our polling place in Hawk Creek for the primary. And these two people walk up and everybody's, all the candidates or their family members are standing there to hand out their pliers, and they're looking at them, they're saying, that person came to my house, that person came to my house, that person I've never seen before. And so, it's just, it's a lot of work to get in front of all the people that are gonna vote. If it wasn't for the shutdown, if it wasn't for the shutdown, I'd be out walking and knocking doors in neighborhoods right now. And if you open the door, I'd talk to you about what you wanted to see the city do and, you know, tell you about who I am.
Well, you better get to tweeting or something, because you don't want the election to get lost in the sauce of all of these things, which is one of the things that I'm concerned about, is that with everything going on, people just don't have the bandwidth to think about voting. So, I'm really like, let's stay in front of people and make sure that they remember to get out and cast their vote. I think it's now more prevalent than ever before and more important, so we definitely need to do it. And I guess, and I'm guessing in and on election season, because normally those are off-seasons when there's not a presidential election, how many votes would a candidate need now to win?
It's gonna be 35, 45,000 voters needed to, or at least are, you know, are gonna turn out just in the city of Asheville. It's gonna be more than half of the adults in the city of Asheville. And so, just the winner, just by winning this time, is gonna have three times more votes than anybody has ever won in a city election before. But I think the other thing, looking, because I'm thinking back a lot about these past two elections. It took a lot for me to decide to do this again. I basically had to be begged. And I, you know, and I walked away from those last two times feeling like I'd run a marathon and come up, you know, 10 feet behind the first place or whatever really short distance behind the first-place person the marathon was. And, you know, and I walked away in 2017, which was the last time I ran, I said, you know, I really just walked away saying, you know, maybe this isn't a white, middle-class, middle-aged guy's time to, in politics. You know, there's a good reason why, you know, why you'd say that. And for basically all of the history of elections since ancient Greece, elections have favored a person who looked like me. And, you know, it's, you know, it's time to, I walked away thinking, you know, it's time to recognize that and to back off. And you see, for example, now, because we're in Asheville in these last two weeks, we've had the protest over the George Floyd murder. And the leadership of those protests is multiracial, it's a lot of non-white, it's a lot younger. And there has been a lot of, I'm reading up, I'm asking people, what, you know, what do you need from me at this point? And, you know, the answer's almost always, you know, follow non-white leadership, follow young leadership, you know, lend your voice and amplify black voices. But, so, all that's a way of saying, it took me a lot of work to, and soul-searching to consider why I would put myself in this position again instead of finding somebody else to just give my support to. And the answer is, I think that Asheville's moment, I think we haven't started to feel the pain that we're gonna feel, both from the shutdown and the recession that's happening, but also the real work that's gotta be done to defund and reconstitute the policing as it's been in the city, to make some real changes when it comes to jobs and housing and everything. And I don't, I don't mean to sound that, I don't mean to sound like I've got a big head or I think I know all the answers or anything, but I didn't see the people in the field that I thought I could really trust to handle these huge tasks. And I just said, you know, because I have been paying attention to local politics for so long, and I've been, I've been working to try to change the system of how the city does things for so long as an outsider going against the city and as somebody who's been in, working on the budgets and the budget meetings. And I think it, I think it just, it takes that, it's a time that needs good management and good leadership and expertise.
I like that answer. And I had a talk with Keith Young a while back. It was just a personal conversation, and I asked him a question about his journey. And he told me when he was first running for office, he would knock on people's doors, and they would say, it's just not your time yet. Like, they didn't have a real reason for not voting for him. It was just not his time. So, I know that a lot of times you have to run two, three, four times even. So, I appreciate that persistence and tenacity. And I said, I think it says a lot about your character and your devotion to Asheville. But I wanted to cover that question for people who are sort of new to politics, like, okay, well, why did he lose last time? Well, it takes a while. It takes a minute to kind of get implanted, to meet enough people, to know enough people, as well as it takes just the dedication to the issues of our city. And so, I applaud you for that.
Yeah. Well, I mean, everybody who's on city council now is somebody who I ran against in one of those last two elections. And so, I saw a lot of what they campaigned on, and I saw how they either changed in the job or they found out that it wasn't the job they thought it was. That's the rap on city council elections. You know, people said, the other thing about those previous two elections is people say, you know, why, you know, if we're this liberal city or this tolerant city of progressives, why can't our government get the things done that we want to? And a lot of people say, well, you know, we keep electing people that don't have the right hearts or they don't have the, they don't have the right passion or, you know, they're really secretly conservatives underneath or something like that. But the, you know, what I've learned is that it's not just, you know, it's not just being good-hearted. Asheville elects good-hearted people all the time. All our local offices do. And yet, when they find out that they're in that position of management and having to steer a bureaucracy that's actually one of the biggest employers in the whole western North Carolina, you know, it's thousands of people that work, you know, in and around this government, and they're gonna manage all the state laws that tell us what we can and can't do or try to tell us that, and all the federal laws and all the different kinds of funding and everything that comes in, being good-hearted isn't by itself enough, you know? And I will, I will go ahead and say that every person who is gonna be on the ballot in November is a good-hearted person. And I've watched them campaign, and everybody's got passion.
So, we all get, we all get three votes, right?
Yes.
How many votes do we get? We all get three votes?
We all get three votes.
Okay. Who are your other two votes? I know you're voting for Rich Lee, but who are your other two votes for? Can you tell us?
Oh, no, I can't do that. I will say that I've never been one to tell somebody, to tell people to only use one of their votes. That's been a real common thing, and the city like, well, if you vote for me and two other people, then, you know, you're spreading out your vote and you're increasing the chance that they'll win instead of me. So, some candidates in the past have told people, only vote for me. And I won't say that, because I think your three votes is your right that's given to you by the law and that, you know, people in the past literally died for. And so, you need to exercise that right to the max.
Yeah. And I knew that he couldn't answer that question, you guys, but it is important for you to know, you get three whole votes, not one. It's super important for us to walk into the polling place very informed about what we have and what are our choices here. We have so many. My next question to you is, what issues do you think really need to be paid attention? Or how exactly has COVID-19 and the Black Lives Matter movement shifted your campaigning, if any?
That's a really good question. So, in my business, we say that, or at least I say a lot, that we don't know what the next crisis is gonna be that comes up, but we know that one is coming. So, I think if you'd have asked me in February of this year, did I think a global pandemic was going to completely cripple the city? It's gonna be one in five people unemployed. It's actually 17.5% unemployment in Buncombe County right now.
Wow.
It was gonna take millions of dollars, you know? Because if you, when we last saw each other at the last forum, we were all talking, we're gonna spend millions of dollars on solar panels and planting more trees and stuff. And then, this crisis hit, and it's taken at least $7 million out of the city budget. And it would be more if it wasn't for the stimulus bills that Congress passed and North Carolina legislature passed and everything. So, I knew that there was a crisis coming up. I think the COVID crisis, like I said, especially illustrates how weak the economy really is underneath here with lots of low-wage jobs that weren't giving people security, lots of home renters instead of homeowners, so people that don't have equity to draw on, lots of dependence on tourism and not just the hotels, but every restaurant, every store, you know, everybody that rents you an inner tube to go down the river, if that's what your thing is to do, all those businesses couldn't survive on their own without outside dollars at this point. So, I think that really exposes it. Even still, when the shutdown started, I really spent a few weeks of soul-searching just trying to figure out what is my leadership role, you know? What do people need from me now? I spent a lot of time just trying to work with individual people that lost their jobs to get through their unemployment applications or doing work with the city to help restaurants reopen if they can't seat all their people inside and doing small things like that. What has really refocused me on... What has really refocused me on um, the role of local government especially is the Black Lives Matter movement and the protests that have come up. If you've been here a while, you know that that's been building a while. It was, you know, it was two years ago that um, Johnny Rush was walking home from his job at the Cracker Barrel and got um, chased by cops and beaten just because, you know, according to them, he was crossing the streets um, off a crosswalk. You know, I work downtown and I, I, I cross streets wherever I can all the time and um, uh, you know, I've never had to fear for that. And we knew that that was exposing really big systemic issues in the police department. Dozens of people knew about it and it wasn't reported until the video was leaked. No action was taken um, against any of the officers involved um, until um, the video was leaked. And so that's really refocused because that's right in cities and city councils responsibility. Um, everybody, you know, and we, we lost the city, the person who'd been the city manager over that. We lost the police chief that was the police chief over that. Um, but that showed, but, but seeing that and going to these protests over the last week really shows how um, protecting our, protecting our people from the government's own agents. To be able to, right now, the city has to say, we can't guarantee a black or brown life that if, that just following the law is gonna be enough and um, to keep you alive. And we can't guarantee the safety of our own residents from our government's own employees. And there, there's no bigger project right now than that.
That's good to hear. I heard you mentioning defund the police. Can you, um, putting your own words, what does that mean for you? How do we defund the police appropriately, if that's something you even believe in? What are your thoughts?
Yeah, so um, I'm, I'm following this debate about, about what people mean when they say defund the police. Cause there's a lot of people right now, they're gonna say, defund the police means take away some funding. Take away the funding for military type gear, like this riot gear and the, and the tear gas and everything that they've been using on citizens, flashbang grenades and such. And I hear people that say, no, we really mean, the police have to stop existing as they exist now. What, I guess where I come from it right now, I haven't really decided. I'm listening to input and um, I'm especially listening to my circle of um, I guess I would say, black elders in the community, um, the, 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 um, the, the black community members that I talk to and, and, and get input from. And um, even among them, there's a lot of variety. I do know that with my office right here on the edge of downtown, on the edge of South Side, when I see police interacting with um, people, it's because um, somebody, a homeless person's gotten drunk and they're hanging out behind my building. Or they're up here, my office is right next to the sketchy hotspot. Um, and you know, you know where I'm talking about over here on Miller?
Um, affectionately called by my husband to stab and grab, yes.
Yeah, so I see, you know, I see police interacting with a lot of people there. And a lot of what they're doing is not, um, is not truly public safety related, right? So they're dealing with a lot of people that have got substance abuse issues and a lot of people that have, um, a lot of people that are homeless and they're um, driven into poverty that um, that makes it so, you know, just, so you, you can't have a private place, it's your own property to go have your drink at. And so, and a lot of it is um, a lot of it is pulling warrants. So a lot of it is people, you know, you just roll up on somebody who, maybe they're just walking down the street, but you're gonna ask for their identification, you're gonna run their warrant and you're gonna find out that they've got some kind of outstanding legal issue in another state or another jurisdiction. And the, that they're, they're trapped in a criminal justice system that is not dedicated towards keeping people safe or keeping you what you um, you know, keeping either you or other people from harm, but it's, it's just, it's literally just about keeping you down, you know? You missed a court appearance for a, you know, minor infraction two years ago and now whatever you've done with your life, they can still come after you and take you in at any point.
Yeah, I think, um, and we've talked about this on the show before and I'm not an elder, but I'm just gonna tell you what you think, what I think, cause you're running for office. I definitely feel like we need to be looking more closely at the police budget and looking for creative ways to um, fund prevention instead of punishment. Um, I think we do fund a lot of punishment and we don't fund enough prevention. Um, I do also think that police have a really important role. However, you know, no one's ever made a song like F the Fire Department, right? Cause we all love our firemen, they treat us like they're there to serve. And, you know, I had an incident with police that was, it was really minor. Um, I was upset, but it was still really minor and just the way they treated me. You know, I went to them and I was like, I'm having this problem. And then they were like, well, you're trespassing. I'm like, I paid fifty dollars to be here, how am I trespassing? They wouldn't even listen to me and they didn't treat me human. And so for me, as like a law-abiding citizen, like the most criminal thing I'm gonna do is like, um, catch myself speeding, cause I already broke my neck driving before, so I'm not gonna even speed, you know? Um, so, but it's like there, it, there's a, um, an atmosphere or an attitude about how to serve that I feel like, you know, we really wanna see change. And I think it's, it's less, I mean, the tear gas is important and all those, but like, can you just be kind? Like, I have had, like, over the last two years, the worst experience with police and I see it escalating over and over and over again. Like, I literally was lost in Charlotte and went to a police officer and he was on Facebook and he did not look up. It was like a hundred degrees and I was lost, I'm already fat, I got all this hair, I thought I was gonna die. And like, he would not help me, he would not even look up from his phone. And to respect me. And so I feel like those are the issues that I feel like, if we can just get past that and then we can start dealing with that budget, but right now, it's like them against us, but they're supposed to work for us. So those are the ideas that I wanna see changed. Like, I wanna be, feel comfortable if I have to go to a police officer, that I'm gonna get the help. And no, they're not all that way, there are a lot of great police officers, especially the ones that, like, I worked here in the schools with, they're amazing. Um, but like, how do we change the perception of us against them? And how does defunding affect that is really where I'm curious to see how that works. Um, because I definitely think it's in that us against them kind of mentality is where we have the biggest problem instead of we all wanna save our community.
Yeah, no, um, I think because of phone cameras and also because of social media, we see more into, and I, I know you're on social media all the time, I'm too, but I, we see more of um, ways that um, police interact with the public and, and the ways that they really think that, at least to me as a, a white person, haven't been visible all my life. And some of it's really scary. When I see somebody talk about how the, the public is the sheep and they're the sheepdogs that have to prevent people from the wolves, and I'm like, are you on Game of Thrones? Or are you actually a member of our community that's here to protect and serve us? And so, and that's, it's a, it's a, um, we had our, you know, our former sheriff of the county talking stuff like that about how really this is like an occupation mindset where they're, they're like, you know, on the streets of Baghdad.
What they wanna make it live, yeah.
Yeah, and I don't think that, you know, again, speaking as a white person, I, I, and as a community leader, I, I interact with police officers all the time. There's a lot of people that are diligently doing their job, but I think.
And they're amazing people, right? Like, I interact with some of them and they're amazing.
I wouldn't do what they do for thirty thousand dollars a year and I, you know, and I, I, I see a lot of people that um, have, that are in different ways confronting their biases and such. But you also, you know, the thing I've, I've come to believe, especially looking at these numbers of even like, how often do you get pulled over if you're a black driver in Asheville, so a white driver and such? And how, you know, and systemic racism means you don't have to necessarily be a bad person. You don't have to even have your own conscious or unconscious internal bias to be participating in the system that perpetuates racism, you know? When the police were taking a task for um, pulling over um, black drivers more than twice as much as pulling over white drivers proportionally, right? They said, well, oh, this is just a fact of geography. We're in the neighborhoods where the poverty and the crime are and that happens to be where black people live. Well, how do, you know, how do, that's still systemic racism, cause um, racism still created uh, um, still created a city where black people live in poor parts of town or in public housing.
That we live in a police state, right? Like, the police officers are there in those particular neighborhoods. I've drove through the neighborhoods and they're just sitting there. I tell you, in the neighborhood I live in, no police officer is just ever just sitting there, like, waiting on me to do something wrong.
Yep, and why don't, and why don't the officers live in that neighborhood and come from that community, if they're gonna exist at all? So when I talk about defund, I really, I have come to the feeling that we need to take away everything that is not related to actually, you know, to like, just the very most serious, like, public safety threats. You know, if I needed somebody, if I was being held hostage in a bank, you know, probably, maybe, I guess, at that point, you know, I would want somebody, somebody armed to come in. But if it's, if it's disrupting two guys that are hanging out in the grass behind my office because they're, you know, they're homeless and, or, you know, if it's getting somebody who's having um, you know, who's having um, mental health issues or who is, you know, escalated in some other way or substance abuse or something like that, if it's getting them to safety, I want that responsibility taken away from police. And what I get from police is that they want those responsibilities taken away from them too.
Definitely. So I have two more questions for you and um, the first question actually does not come from me. But um, when we did interview the fireman, someone tagged you and they said, Rich, what do you think about this? What are you gonna do about the firemen if you're elected? And I promised to ask that question. So how are you gonna take care of our firemen if you're protected, if you are? How are you going to take care of our firemen if you are elected?
So um, I think there's, there's a couple of parts to this. I know we, you, you've been really generous with your time, so I wanna be careful about not taking too long on it. First of all, I think we gotta make sure that the lowest paid firemen are still at least making um, what we've said is a living wage and we're keeping our own commitment um, that we've made to city staff. I do not accept the arguments that um, well, they're asleep part of the time or no, we only, we want a guaranteed annual salary, but we not, you know, if you're talking about somebody who spends sixty hours a week away from their family and their kids and as a parent, you know, I think being at work means being away from my kids, then they're, they need to be compensated for it, we need to keep our agreements. And that's something that I really hope the city will, will go ahead and address, especially because in the middle of coronavirus and COVID, when the, if you start having, if you come down with COVID and you can't breathe, the person who's gonna knock on your door is most likely a fireman, is the first person there. They're making a lot of extra calls to respond to us and keep us safe and um.
And endangering their own lives, like.
And endangering their own lives, that's a very, that's very true. Um, so I am for increasing their pay. I did some math that said that it might cost five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars for them to raise wages because I don't think a person who has ten years of experience in the department should make above, just above the bit, the new bare minimum. But um, it's, that's a manageable number for the city to come up with. Um, the other thing that um, has been um, a big issue in the past and is still around is making sure that firefighters keep their benefits and especially their health benefits. There is a um, there is a lot of science coming in behind being a firefighter, shortening your lifespan um, in a lot of ways, um, in a lot of cases of, of cancer and um, other directly um, um, occupation-related illnesses after the fact. And so um, it's been, um, it's not as much in front of the city right now, but in previous elections, it's been um, important that the um, that the city not try to cut benefits and be cheap about the stuff because if you're, if you're given that time, maybe if you're twenty years old and you're hired for the, by the, the fire department, you're not even um, you, 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 at twenty years old, I don't even know if you could understand the risk that twenty years later, you're gonna be dying of cancer that you got from a job that you just got because it was available and it was cool. Um, and then the, the last thing is the um, the culture of, including culture of sexual harassment that is in the department that you started hearing people talk about at um, and meetings and publicly from now on. And from my perspective, that is a problem that comes um, directly from the top and stops at Chief Burnett's desk. He needs to make sure, especially women in the fire department, are protected from um, the kind of harassment that you or I would expect in any kind of job. And um, he's not. So, and that's something I've been, I've worked with um, Chief Burnett on different things, you know? I like him as a person, but that's something I'm really disappointed by.
And my final question for you is, I really feel like we've talked a lot, we talked a lot about, you know, black and brown lives, but I really am an advocate and an ally for the LGBTQ community. And I wanna know, um, how can my, as an ally voting for you, help me with my mission to make sure that my LGBTQ friends are getting all the rights and all the things that they need to live and be happy and successful here in Asheville?
Okay, uh, so first of all, let's stop and recognize that today's a historic day where the Supreme Court just ruled that um, that the um, Civil Rights Act protections apply to transgender, transgender and LGBTQ um, plus people. Um, and so that's cool, that's something that um, the city first tried to put in place, oh, seven or eight years ago and was um, thwarted from applying those protections to people who weren't city employees um, all the way back then. So um, so that's great. Um, as far as I know, in North Carolina, it's still illegal to discriminate on housing and also um, like some healthcare such um, stuff against LGBTs. So, so finding ways as a city to protect residents from the most obvious kind um, forms of um, of discrimination is um, a really big deal, it's one of the biggest things that the city can do. And in North Carolina, we live in a state where, as we saw with HB2, a lot of um, a lot of the good we try to do can be stepped in and thwarted by um, by our state legislature. But that's also one of the reasons why it takes real leadership and real um, management skill and real dedication and a grasp of the details um, to get that done. When, when Charlotte um, passed the nondiscrimination ordinance that they passed that tipped off HB2, um, it was not, no other city in North Carolina had thought it was possible for a city to step in and say, we're gonna shut down um, discrimination against gay and transgender people. And Charlotte found, working with their legal department, and the city found a way to make it happen. They didn't accept, we just can't do this because the state law prevents us from doing it. And yeah, the state came back and, you know, and, and hammered everybody back with this horrible bill that um, that cut off a lot of avenues for protection statewide. But we gotta still be looking for, um, we gotta still be looking for the, the legal avenues to make it happen. And when, when you're in the city government, there is a real temptation. A lawyer is gonna stand up in front of you and the city manager is gonna stand up in front of you and say, uh, you can't do such and such, and the law says you can't do such and such. And if you just accept that and sit back, then you're gonna finish your term with nothing really done. And you have to keep pushing on it and keep finding the ways to make stuff happen.
I am so glad that we had an opportunity to sit down and talk today and um, just to get to know you better. I already feel like, you know, your friend, my friend, cause I am in the Asheville Politics Group with you and I'm, you know, around and I see your work, but it's been great to really talk to you and get to know you better. And I just wanna say that I appreciate you for coming on the Asheville View and I hope we get more time together um, in the future.
Well, um, I'll be available and so, um, and I'm talking about, if I get elected, if I don't get elected, I mean to keep out in front of people and not, you know, this is, to me, this is my um, this is my town that really, I came of age in, I was seventeen when I moved here. Um, and I, I grew up in, I don't have any plans to run for governor or, or anything like that and.
I would like to run for governor one day.
Yeah, well, I think you should, I, to me, this is, I can't wrap my head around some of the stuff that they do in, in Washington or in Raleigh and, and.
But could you just see me up there just causing all kind of?
Kudos to anybody who can, um, who can wrap their heads around it. To me, the city is where my passion is and where I feel like I can um, leave my mark in a way that's meaningful. And I don't have plans to um, to move out or to, to move on to anything else. I would love, I would love to get elected to, to City Hall and to be there. You know, honestly, I would love to be there twenty years from now and just people say like, like, Rich just came in every day, was plugged away and our, I would love after one term, after one year, I would love people to say. would love after one term, after one year, I would love people to say, I can, if I live in South Asheville, or East Asheville, or, or Hillcrest, or Montford, or, or if I'm five years old, or a hundred years old, I'd like people to be able to say, "I can count one meaningful way that Rich actually made my life different." You know, "My park is nicer down my street, um, you know, the, my trash truck isn't dumping trash juice all over my road," something, something like that, you know?
Yeah.
Um, I, but I would love, twenty years from now, I would love people to say, there's only a few people in Asheville's history that have really left a, a mark that, that went on decades and decades and decades, and I think, um, and this is my place, my home, it's what I've gotta leave for my kids who are eight, eight, ten and ten, and so I've got to make that happen the best way I can.
I am so thrilled to be in community with you. Um, so you guys have been watching The Asheville View, and we'll see you next time. Bye.
Thanks so much, buddy, thanks.